What's up everybody? This is Jonathan Smith with Solutions Unlimited. You're listening to the Behind the Face Podcast. There are many hidden gems in the upstate and on this show, Kevin and I will sit down with these guests, get to know them, their businesses, and what makes them special. If you love getting to know more about people and businesses in your area, stay tuned as we will dive into a brand new person every week. So let's get this week's guest going. Here we go. Hey guys, welcome to the Behind the Face Podcast. Today we've got an exciting interview. The past few episodes, we've looked at some different things, some different areas of business. Today, we're abandoning business entirely. We're going to get into the subject that nobody wants to talk about. We are going to deep dive, well, I say deep dive, we're going to go as deep as we can today into politics. So today I got a good friend of mine, Jared Spencer. Jared, welcome to the show, buddy.
Thank you, Jonathan. It's good to be on Behind the Face and excited to talk more, anytime I can talk politics, it's, I enjoy doing that.
Yeah, I know you do. And that's one reason I'm excited to have you on the show. Jared does a lot. He is in the town of Cowpens. And he's going to talk us through a little bit about all he does in different areas. I mean, this guy is busy. I mean, he literally burns the candle at both ends, as some people would say. So as we get into this, before we start getting into politics, the big question is, a lot of us look at politics and go, okay, they're all crooked, they're all fake, they're all about themselves. Why in the world would somebody want to get involved in politics? So for the starters of the show today, tell us why you got into it, how you got into it, and why it's a passion for you.
Good question, Jonathan. And I guess I'm a glutton for punishment to begin with because of course, politics is a dirty game, especially in South Carolina, nationwide, to be honest. So what got me involved at first is of course, when you get up, when you're younger, you don't think about the effects government, the decisions that politicians make on your personal life, how it can affect you financially and in every aspect, actually. So as I got older, started getting my tax bills, my property tax bills, my city tax bill, you start looking at this and think, where is all this money going? They sure are getting a lot of our money for you not to know where it's going. So it's, it's a good question to ask on every level. So if you look at your property tax bill, you see so much goes to the county, so much goes to the state, city, and other various things, fire districts, library, this and that. So that's what got me involved at first. I thought we were being overly taxed, I still do. And I wanted to know where that money was going. And if, and if my elected officials were being fiscally conservative with the tax dollars before they can ask for a tax increase, I want to know, are they being responsible for what they're getting already? So that's what got me involved at first. And, and it was on the town level, I guess, where I noticed it more because of course, you say the county and state, then you say the city had their taxes to it. So that's what got me involved at first. And the Christian aspect of it, the pro-life, non-action I saw going on in our state and, and our country. So from a Christian standpoint, and from a, from a fiscal conservative standpoint, I had all kinds of questions. I wanted to know who was spending the money, who was making the decisions, why weren't they making the right decisions at the time, of course? So, and, and I understand a lot of this, a lot of politicians, they hear information and they have statistics and other information that you don't necessarily hear. So at first I was quick to judge, now I'm a little slower to judge. But I've learned a lot more over the years. And it kind of validates the reason I got in politics in the first place, to make sure things in our country, our state, down to the local level are going in the right direction.
You know, it's interesting, you, you talk about that at first, it was just kind of a financial thing. But obviously, when you, I'm, I'm conservative. My background is I have a lot of ministry background. So I'm, I'm a Christian as well, and anybody that knows us knows that. And what people don't realize is what goes on behind the curtain. That's kind of the phrase that we use is once you get into it, you see things from a different perspective, you see things in a different light. So now that you, how many, how long have you been in politics as far as years ago?
Well, I joined the Sparkville County Republican Party in 2008, been involved heavily in the party since 2008. Been an elected official for the town of Cowpens since 2010, I think it is. So a long time as far as being in elected office and also helping with campaigns and helping get conservative candidates elected office. I think what we lose sight of a lot of times is people get involved in politics and think they can go in and make the change. Well, you're not the right person for every job all the time. So, so the best thing to do is if you don't have the time to get involved, if you don't have the time to do this or that, or you don't have time to educate yourself on every little elected position, get behind a candidate who has, that you have a little bit of faith in, you know, that will do the right thing. So, and this is all the way down to school board elections, school board, town council. There's a lot of overlooked positions, county council. And you know, you can get involved as much as you want to, or as little as you want to. But any involvement really opens your eyes to what's going on all around you. And people are quick to complain about national issues. They watch a lot of news and they hear about a lot of national issues, but a lot of these issues can be solved if, if Christians specifically could get involved at a local level. You know, you hear a lot on the news right now, and I might have varied from your question a second ago, but it's just coming to mind, you hear a lot on the news about CRT and a lot of different topics coming out of public school systems nationally. Quick fix to this, get involved, get your friends involved, run for school board. That way you get a firsthand account of what's going on in that school, and then you can help make the decisions to, to move your school district in the right way. Same way with a town council, to move your town in the right direction, county level, state level, it's all the same, it's all the same recipe. And all it takes is involvement. You don't have to have a, you know, they don't give specifically a degree for school board politicians or elected officials at, at any college, but it's just mainly common sense and Christian principles applied. And it would, it would change our country from the bottom to the top. Just people getting involved, common sense, Christian values, getting involved. You can, you can make a huge, huge difference.
I like how you said from the bottom up. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about some other things as we go along. But everybody wants to fix everything and they complain about everything and they want to say, we need a new president. And of course, I'll, I'll be the first one to admit, I'm conservative. So I'm pro-Trump, you know, I did not vote for Biden. I think everybody has a right to say who they voted for without causing a problem. And that's a problem in our country is that people are scared to voice their opinion and you get criticized if you do. But that's one of the beauties of this country is you have the freedom to vote for whoever you want for, and I respect the position. Now, I didn't vote for Biden, but I do respect him because of his position. And I think that's something that's lacking in our country. But you're not going to fix the country by just putting a new president in. So you mentioned a little bit about that, but, but talk us through a day-to-day thing, because obviously you're involved in it, that changes have to happen first in our, in our towns. And as that grows, it grows to the counties, and then that grows to the states. And then the states is what changes the federal. And, and that puts pressure on the president because obviously he should be representing the country. And right now, we all know that it's just, the big word you hear is, is corruption, that they're all corrupt and so forth. But I do believe there are some, there are some good people there. I know people don't like Ted Cruz, and I got to meet him personally through you guys, and Mike Huckabee and some of these other guys. So walk us through a little bit on, you know, changing things from the, the bottom up, if you will.
Oh, sure. And, and of course, if you watch National New Year's, everybody, it's all about the president, what the president's done and what he hasn't done. And who's going to come back in office this next cycle and change things around? And, and of course, that's extremely important, but you can focus on national issues so much that you forget about your own backyard. And you know, the change that you can see almost immediately are these elected offices locally. Your town council, your school board, state elected positions. And that's so important because if your state takes a stand against this administration, as, as we're seeing in Texas and Florida and all that, and I know our governments, we have a different form of government than those states, of course. But you can make a huge difference. Again, like Ron DeSantis, for example, Governor Ron DeSantis, making a huge difference, even though Biden is in office. You know, of course, I don't agree with the current administration. And I will be actively working to get a more conservative Republican in office that aligns with our values. But it still goes back to the local level. A lot of people just overlook the fact, they don't think it's that important. Chesney, Chesney, South Carolina, small town, Cowpens, South Carolina, small town. These elections for town council, they go overlooked. And, and I noticed the last election cycle in Chesney, there was two of the council members got elected with 50 something votes. I mean, you can run a write-in campaign on an election that's small, because nobody pays attention, nobody thinks it's important, it's extremely important. Every position is, you fire district positions are important. They use tax money, your town council, your school boards, state involvement in your Republican Party. You know, these candidates come around usually, in my opinion, and I also serve as first vice chair of the Sparkville County GOP. To me, the GOP, you're at your county level, serves as a neutral ground that is supposed to bring all candidates, not just the ones I agree with, but put all the candidates in front of you and let you make the decision. In the past, we've had, you know, in the county, they would just bring around their favorites or this and that. To me, even, even if I don't like them, if they're a presidential candidate or a state house candidate or running for Congress, put them in front of the people. Let the people decide, right or wrong. You know, the people have that right to decide who elect, who represents them in office. So, you know, we live, we live in a, in the Bible Belt, we should have a big sway in these elections. You know, if, if we, the people just showed up to vote in the area we live in, we would have a majority of Christian elected officials. And you can vet them along the way, you know, every, of course, everybody says they're Christian, of course, everybody says they're pro-life or pro-second amendment when they're running for office. You can't listen to that. Get involved, look, do a little vetting on the candidate and look where they've actually stood. No, don't listen to anything they say, look where they've actually done it, where they've stood in the past, their voting record, if they have one. If they haven't, their involvement in helping, in helping in the community, you know. So, you know, the day by day, I guess it depends on however much you want to get involved, but it doesn't take much. It doesn't, I mean, I work a full-time job. I run my family's business here in Cowpens. And involved in Sparkville County GOP on town council, it doesn't take much, you know, any kind of, just getting people to show up to vote is hard to do in this county. And we're one of the most conservative red counties in the state, but just get people to show up to vote and, and doing voting drives at your church in the back. I know the church, I know what the church is there for, I know what it's about. I wouldn't, I don't see a problem in after hours, after service, this or that, register a few people to vote in the parking lot. Why not? Get people engaged, you know, if the church itself got involved, we'd fill up every seat in the upstate by far. And we've got some big churches around here, they're all networked together, you know how that goes, most of them. So if just the churches got involved, you'd see a huge difference. But yeah, there's something to do on a day-by-day basis, really.
You brought up one of the questions I had written down to ask you. I talked to my neighbors and so forth, and sometimes we have cordial conversations and sometimes they get heated. And that's just the nature of politics when, especially you say something, then they say, well, that's not true, that's your perception. So I'm afraid there's a, that we know COVID was a pandemic, but I think there's another pandemic. And I was born and raised in Brazil, South America, and if people keeping up with the news, they see what's going on. In that country, that election was clearly stolen, everything was electronic, there were no paper ballots. And supposedly, a convicted felon is now the president of the country and got more votes than there's actually people alive. And it's, it's just a fiasco. So the, the common thread that I find, Jared, is that a lot of people are saying, you know, I give up, I'm not going to vote anymore. It doesn't matter because my vote, it just basically is just that, my vote does not matter. So how can you coach our listeners today to, your vote does matter, it does make a difference. And yes, there's all these electronic issues that, you know, maybe talk a little bit about that, maybe is there plans to deal away with that? To go back to just paper ballots and so forth. But walk us through the importance of getting out and voting versus just staying home and wishing for the best.
Well, it's extremely important. And there's case after case, even here locally, of elections being decided by one or two votes, literally. That happens a lot, that stuff, just talk, that happens a lot. So I mean, you could go hide in a hole. We're Bible believers, we know how it's all going to end anyways. So if you could use that excuse, if you don't, they go hide in a hole, complain all you want, that's not getting anything done. I think we have a civic duty to, to do our best with what we have here now and, and elect as Christian and conservative candidate as we can. You know, sometimes you don't have a choice on the, some people say, well, we're not electing a preacher or this and that. The Constitution doesn't trump the Bible. So we vote with biblical principles first. The Constitution aligns with that for the most part. So you vote with biblical principles first, then whoever aligns with the Constitution. So it's not a waste of time. And it's funny, the, the people that say it's a big waste of time are the ones that complain the most, of course, you'll hear that. But it's extremely important. I mean, if you want to have a say, and if you want to make a change, it is as simple as you and your family showing up to vote. If everybody shows up to vote and everybody votes like they should, you will see the country turn back the way you think it should be, you know. Low, like I just said, this, this past Chesney election, I think it was 50 something votes, one town council seat. And the other, the second place person was like 50, it was like 55 to 52 votes. So that was three votes between winning a seat on town council or not. So same way with the school boards, you can keep a lot of, a lot of this mess down, a lot of this, protect our children, a lot of this from hearing about all this crazy stuff in libraries and everything else. If you'll just get involved, get on these little boards, don't think you have to be that important and have to belong to a, had to be a congressman to make a change. You can be on the board of the Sparkville County Library and make a huge difference. You know, we see the books they're pushing out now. So it's the little seats that are getting overlooked and make the biggest change locally, the quickest. And it's not a waste of time to get involved and, and vote for your friends on this, get behind some, if you don't want to run for it, no problem. If you don't have the time, I understand that. Push a candidate on social media, get them to vote for them.
Yeah, because I would say most of us have more than 50 something friends, we would hope, that would come out and vote for us. And there you go, they could be a part of the town council, so to speak. So walk us through a little bit of, maybe power is not the correct word for this, but maybe influence would be a better word. But what kind of influence does the town council? And, and I know a little bit of this because I work a little bit with the Cherokee County Sheriff's Office as a chaplain and so forth. So I understand a little bit of the influence of the town council on, on that aspect. But walk us through the, the influence that a town council has in, I guess you can put it like this. You can either help the sheriff or you can tie his hands behind his back. And, and so just different areas that you have influence in that people may not realize. Like you said, 50 something votes, somebody got voted as town council, what kind of influence slash power do they have in their local area?
Oh, good question, good question. And it's the same, when I talk about this, as far as town council, it's the same on the school board and every other seat. They have the power of the purse, your tax dollars. And if you'll put, and a lot of people, I know nowadays pay their taxes online, this and that, and overlook their property tax receipt. I challenge anybody to pull out your property tax receipt, you'll get angry enough to get involved, once you pull it out, look at it. Look, they detail line items where, where your dollars go to, and you'll see where most of your money goes to. So it's the power of the purse. If you control the purse, you can control what goes on in each department that, that receives the funding. As far as a small town council, you know, supporting your law enforcement in that town to, and supporting the sheriff and the county to lower crime in your community as well, not just on a, not just on the fiscal aspect, but lowering crime and everything else in your community. But you see some of these bigger cities, not, not necessarily Chesney, Cowpens in our local area, but some Sparkville City Council and Greenville City Council and all these. You see it nationally on the news, how some of these cities have the power to, to deem themselves sanctuary cities and can override a lot of, a lot of the good laws we have in place. And as far as immigration is concerned, we see some of the bigger cities nationally talking about sanctuary cities for women seeking abortions. So there's a lot of power in these seats that goes overlooked, mainly the purse. It's kind of like the golden rule, you know, the political gold rule, he with the most gold rules. So that's the way with the politics. You know, the county, the school, the city council, the school districts, oh, they control a large chunk of your money. You should have more of a say what they do with your money. That's where the power lies.
Yeah, that, you know, the big saying that we all hear, you hear it on TV shows, you hear it on movies, we joke around about it, but follow the money. I mean, where the money's at is where the power's at. So there's no joke about that at all. And a lot of people have the perception, and I know a little bit about this from talking to guys like you, but a lot of people have the perception is that the reason people get into politics is because they're deadbeats, they can't hold a job down, and they're in it for the money. Walk us through, and I don't know what you can and you can't say on, on the podcast, but you don't make all this money that people think that you make. And you're, you're not going to be retiring in some big mansion with 400 acres. And that's a perception that a lot of people have about politics. And no doubt, probably when you get into Congress and stuff like that, there's a lot of underhanded, there's a lot of behind the scenes money or dirty money, as we call it, blood money, you know, whatever. But in a more local level, walk us through a little bit of, you know, the, the financials. Because I know a lot of it is, you're donating your time, you're not doing it for the money, you're fighting the fight to keep America the way it is, and it's not about the money. So walk us through a little bit of, of that aspect of being in politics.
Okay, yeah, it's definitely not about the money, especially the local level up to the state level. For example, Cowpens Town Council, we meet, we meet every third Monday of the month. Usually we'll have a workshop, maybe two workshops a month. So you might meet two or three times a month, on top of getting around town, making various emails to get things done, talking to DOT and the various aspects of the job. But I'm the mayor of Pro Tem in Cowpens, I get, I get compensated, I think it's around $150 a month for that. So it's, it's not about the money, the town council members make a little less and the mayor makes a little more than that. So in the same way, but I don't even know if the school boards, I don't know of a school board around here that pays the school board members. Your state house representatives don't make much, definitely don't make much. Considering you have to drive back and forth to Columbia three days or more a week for the first four months of the year. Not to mention getting around to all your constituents and taking care of problems in the district. So for the most part, it's not about the money, the people that are, that are representing you are either doing it, I don't know, for the right reasons, or they're doing it for the, for the little bit of power and control they get from the position. You know, you can use it in a bad way, state house representatives elect our judges. So if you're, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying every lawyer representative does this, but if you're a lawyer in our state, and you become a state house representative, you're actually going to be electing the judges that you might be presenting a case in front of. So that could definitely benefit you. We, we're working to do something about that. A lot of little things like that, mainly, you're either in it for, of course, like everything, you're either in it for the right reasons or you're in it for the wrong reasons. But it's definitely not for the money unless you get to a national level. Of course, congressmen and, and, you know, moving on up from there, working in the administration and all that, you would make a lot of money. I wouldn't be able to speak to a lot of that because, of course, that's, I, I've never, other than helping candidates run for election, I've never been involved in that aspect.
Yeah. So I mean, you, you hear it, guys, you know, you hear people complain that politicians are dirty and they're just bought out by money. I don't know about you, but I wouldn't get bought out for $150 a month. I wouldn't even, you know, waste my time if I was doing it for the money. You do it because, one, like, like Jared said, we're, we're Christians first, but, but I'm an American, we do it for the love of the country. We do it for the love of the flag and trying to preserve what this country was built on, which is slowly dwindling away. And I don't want to get into the history of the nation, but they're in our school systems, like you said, if you want to get involved in the school systems. I see a, and I was a school administrator for about seven years, so I know what I'm talking about on this aspect. Now you're seeing a mass exodus from the public school system, the, some of the nonsense that's going on. So instead of fighting for what's right, instead of trying to make the changes, to maintain the school systems, kind of like we grew up in, the values we grew up in, people are just saying, I forget it, ain't worth it. And they're now spending money to go to private education or Christian schools or, or whatever. And that's just because people are not getting involved in, in politics like Jared is doing. So if you really care, you got to fight. And I preach that in churches, is that if, if you have something that's worth fighting for, it's worth fighting for. I mean, that's just the, the basics of it. So Jared, I'm going to ask you this, and I know I'm really throwing this off the cup, he's not ready for this question. And, but one big thing you're hearing now is the, the word woke. And a lot of people do not understand because they're, they're, they're not being properly educated on what these terminologies mean. They're just watching late night shows like Jimmy Fallon and so forth, and they're getting all the wrong information, the wrong definitions. So what is woke? And tell us a little bit about that, as far as what exactly does that mean? How does that help us, hurt us, and so forth?
Well, yeah, that is, that is a big topic to go into, but, and we don't have all day, of course, to, to get into every aspect of that. Of course, we're seeing across our country, to me, woke is a, basically goes back to the churches, the church's fault, not being involved, not, not reaching out like we should be doing. We're seeing the home collapse statistically. We're seeing children being raised with little to no parenting at all. And we've seen this for several generations now, and no church attendance, no, no solid authority to fall back on, no Bible teaching at all. So not so much in the Bible Belt, like I said, and we're even seeing it here, but nationally, you know, it's, we're just going downhill. So we're, we're starting to reap the consequences of, of not doing our job as a church and as Christians, reaching out and parents not doing their job. And, and just a slow decline of what America was founded on, biblical principles. And it's, it's killing us from the inside out. You know, everybody wants to talk about China, everybody wants to talk about, blame any other country for America's problems. It, it's all on us. And, and it's mainly, goes back to the church, you know. We have a lot, a lot of guilt in this. So we've not been doing our job properly. And I'm guilty of it. Yeah, you're guilty of it. Everybody's guilty of it. But we know the only way America's going, we're going to see a revival of an Americanism or American patriotism. And we had the right recipe to begin with, and we've slowly drifted away from that for, for 100 years or more or so. So we're starting to reap the consequences of that. And I don't, you know, unless God intervenes, I don't, I don't see a fix to it. Like I said, we know how this ends. We should do our best to, to, you know, with what God has given us, we should be good stewards of, of our community and our, our state and everything. God's given us the liberties we have here, but we know how it ends and we're on a downhill slide.
Yeah, I like how you, you're, you're emphasizing a lot on the, the Christian aspect and the church aspect. But there are going to be some listeners that are going to watch our podcast and, and listen to what you're saying. And they may not be churchgoers, they may not be Christians per se. And, you know, of course, now you ask anybody, everybody's a Christian. But I would say, would you agree with me to say that even if somebody wasn't a church-going person, even if somebody was not a, a Christian per se, independent on which denomination, which religion they're from, what terminology they have, would you say that our area, that even if you would say, I'm not a church, I'm not a Christian, that the equal, there's an equal force of conservatives that have a, that have a, if, if there were a hundred items, maybe 95 of those items, we would agree on, just because maybe I'm not a Christian, maybe I'm not a churchgoer, but I am a conservative, if you will. Would you say that that's an equal force in, in our area here in the upstate?
Sure, sure. I think most people are, and even, you know, I use these terms, Republican, Democrats, Libertarians, you know, independents. I think everybody's getting a little sick of the government control. The, the overwhelming, you know, oppression of the government, the over regulations, you know, as we're seeing in Seattle and other Northwest states and towns. People's just getting sick of it. It don't work. These, these woke ideologies don't work. The economics of it all doesn't work. So people are, you know, we don't have to agree. For example, the, the marijuana issue, you know, people bring this up all the time as far as constitutionalist. We sell alcohol, alcohol's just as bad as marijuana. Why not legalize marijuana? Well, you know, as a libertarian and as a constitutionalist, they're right. They're right. There's, there's not a big difference there. So I could understand somebody taking a, an issue with, with liberties allowed by the constitution. The fact is though, we have a moral obligation as Christians, definitely. I could, you know, even if the constitution allows it, when it hits the Bible, I'm a no vote on it. But, and that's my duty as a Christian. But even if you're not a Christian, you've got to look at the, the, the moral aspects of it. How many people has alcohol killed? How many people has marijuana killed? And I'm just using these as, as analogies, but you look at the statistics in Colorado, where they legalized marijuana, you know, look at the statistics nationwide since alcohol's, since, since prohibition was ended. It's just, you know, do you want your, do you want people to keep dying? Do you want, do you want things to fail? Do you want America to slowly go downhill like this morally and ethically? So it's just up to the voters, you know, even if you're not a Christian, can you not see the big picture here in, in the proven statistics and just seeing it yourself across the country? Can you not step back, look at that and vote accordingly then? You know, I, I believe, and I, you know, I was, I was raised in a Christian home and been a Christian, you know, I was raised a Christian my whole life. It's hard for me to look at it through, through a secular point of view and not see where they can't be for the betterment of the country. You know, is this regulation or is this, just because we're allowed to do this, is this what's best for the country going forward? So, yeah, there's a, there's a whole, you know, we could spend three or four hours talking about this. Freedoms and liberties and overregulation of the government, what's right and what's wrong. But, but to me, if you want the America that we grew up in, that your parents grew up in, that your grandparents grew up in, we've slid way downhill in just the past 10, just since I was a kid. So, and it's going to keep getting worse. And you have to weigh that out when you go to the ballot box. And when you support candidates with these woke ideologies, do you want your kids going to a library and being, being able to walk past sections that the books wouldn't be, I mean, they would be X rated if it was in a movie theater. So you saw this week, Ron DeSantis couldn't even read one of the books on national TV that they, that they're pushing in public schools in Florida. Couldn't even read it on national television. How bad is that? So, yeah, even from a non-Christian point of view, you gotta have a little common sense.
Yeah, a little bit. I know we, like you said, we could talk for hours on different stuff and maybe we'll, we'll get together again and have more conversations about, you know, politics and so forth. You know, one of your colleagues, Erin Wafer, I'd like to get her on the show as well, you know, get her intake on, on things and view. But I think the biggest disconnect with politics and, and used to, everybody would fight, I'm Republican, I'm Democrat. And like you said, I think a lot of people are just sick of the titles, they're sick of the parties. Everybody's just like, I'm neither, I'm conservative. Whichever, whichever candidate more aligns with my values, I'm going to vote for the lesser of the two evils. But I think the biggest disconnect is education. We're being misinformed, or people are misinformed, we're being misinformed by, you know, Hollywood actresses and, you know, other politicians and the, the media for sure is, is not giving us all the facts because they're, they're giving their view, their perception. And we all know that, you know, is the glass half empty? Is it half full? You know, there's the, it's all on how you look at it. So how can somebody, what is the best way for somebody to be educated to make the right decision? Mention one, is if you're looking at a candidate, don't listen to what they're telling you, because a, a good politician is going to tell you and then do the opposite. But what they are going to do is probably follow their tradition of how they voted in the past. So that's one area. But how can people become properly educated to, one, become more involved, but to be able to vote the correct way? So where can they find that information correctly?
That's a good question and a hard question. Of course, you know, it's hard to find the right information on anything, but I, I would encourage people, there, there's a Hillsdale College online Constitution course. You know, if you can educate yourself constitutionally, that would go a long ways in telling, you know, deciding on who to vote for. Cause you, we've got, we've got rules, we've got a guideline to go by, and it's a good one. And it's, I mean, you know, it's, it's worked for a long time. So educate yourself constitutionally first. Vote for constitutionalists, people that, no matter what their title, if it's Republican, Democrat, no matter what name they go under, how they're voting constitutionally. Are they physically conservative? Do they align with the principles you believe that our country was founded on? Christian principles for me. And do that, there's, there's, of course, there's various online information sources. I don't really want to name many because that might not be your cup of tea necessarily, but I'd be very careful with any news media. I watch Fox News, I watch Newsmax, I watch CNN, I watch all of them just to find out what's going on. But I wouldn't trust any of them, to be honest. I wouldn't trust media in general. Find you, find you a source online, and there's tons out there. Conservative source, pay attention to them, gain trust in them, take, take everything, of course, with a grain of salt, but gain, gain a little bit of, of trust in some of these sources and just glean from that. Get involved locally. I mean, you don't have to, you don't have to have a news media or any source to tell you when you go to these school board meetings, that have pornographic books in the libraries, wrong. You don't need anybody telling you that's wrong, that's wrong. Use a little common sense. A town council or a county council or a city council meeting, you don't need a source to tell you what you see on your property tax receipt, how much they're taking of your money and how much they're spending out, what they're spending it for. You don't need a source to tell you, just to use some common sense there, of course. Nationally, just, just trust, like I said, look on, find you a source online that you can trust, stand behind, glean some, glean a little bit from that, then, then compare it across, across the board and come up with your own conclusions. A lot of these candidates coming around, we'll have the presidential election coming up next year. Hopefully Smartburg GOP and the state GOP, all these candidates will be coming through the upstate. Go hear them for yourself. Take, take time just to go listen to them. You can learn a lot from a person standing face to face and just listening to what they have to say. So go ask them some questions, you know, there'll be plenty of that, there'll be plenty of, we're the first in the South primary. So they'll all come here first. And most of them, you have a record to look back on. I know Nikki Haley's already announced that she's running. Of course, Donald Trump's running again. Several others will be jumping in the race. Every one of the front, the frontier candidates all have a record to look back on already. So go ahead and be looking at them. Everybody knows Ron DeSantis is probably going to get in the race. So there's three right there. You can go ahead and be, be looking back at the record online to see where they've stood in the past, how they voted in the past. Most people know how Nikki Haley stood. She was our governor here in the state. So you already have kind of a record to look back on her. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of digging in on this stuff, a lot of vetting goes behind candidates. But once you find one that aligns with you, put your support behind it. Push them on social media, send them a $25 donation. Makes a big deal because there's big money goes into these races. So just getting involved, you can get involved with the Smartburg County GOP. You can email me, I'll, I'll give it to you here in a minute, or Smartburg County GOP, Google it online, there's a website you can go to, register to get involved. The state GOP, the ASC GOP, you can go to the website, get involved with that. And like I said, there's different, different characters and personalities in the GOP that you might not get along, you might agree with them, not just like the way they're doing things. So you'll find somebody involved that agrees with you. Homeschoolers, they'll get behind certain candidates, Christian school, school choice candidates, a lot of people get behind them. So you, you'll do a little bit of research, you'll find somebody you can get behind. And of course, I'd be happy to share my, my personal point of view with anybody that, that wants to reach out to me and ask.
That's awesome. That's a lot of information. I, I know I gotta let you go. We're kind of getting to the end of our show. And like I said, we could talk for this about hours. So it's not about a time constraint, but you know, Jared's a busy man and I don't want to hold him up from his other duties and he's got things he's got to do. But one last question before we wrap this thing up, is, but we've covered a lot of material today for sure. No, no question about that. But in Calpens, where your, your town council and so forth, and all the people that are in your district, because obviously I'm not in your district. So I, I would support you if, if I could, but I'm, I'm not in your area. But what are the pressing issues? What is going on right now that you need help with, where people need to get involved and, and, and help that could detrimentally, you know, go good or bad e- either way?
I guess the most pressing issue right now is we have town elections coming up this November. So my, my term will be up in November. I'll be running this coming election for the position of mayor. Our mayor is stepping down after three terms, so I'll be running for that position. So they can help get the word out, get the message out, if you live in the town of Calpens. As far as what people can do to get involved in our county or our local level, we have a reorganization process every two years. The, every Republican, every county in the state does. It's the Republican reorganization process. What that does is the precinct you vote at, people can get involved with that and run as a president or executive committee man for that precinct, or a delegate. You run as a delegate, you go to the county convention, vote on your Smartburg County leadership, the officers of the Smartburg County GOP. From that point, you run from, if you want to get involved more, you can run as a delegate to the state convention. If you want to get involved more, you can run as a delegate to the national convention. But in order to be at the national convention, the delegates that pick who our president's going to be, as far as the Republican nominee, you have to start at your local precinct, the reorganization process. So you can't skip the first step and ever get to the, to the national convention or the state convention. So if you, if you like, if you want to be involved in this, in the South Carolina Republican Party, and you want to do more than that, you want to be involved nationally, you have to start at your local precinct. And you can do that, we're actually having our first, our reorganization meeting this Saturday morning at 10 o'clock at High Point Academy in Smartburg. They can email, if you want to get involved at your precinct, I can let you know which one that is. You can either email me, Jared at Spencerinsulation.net, that's J-A-R-R-E-D at Spencer Insulation, I-N-S-U-L-A-T-I-O-N.net, or the Smartburg County GOP website. You just Google Smartburg County, find us on, the Smartburg County GOP, or find us on Facebook. And there's a link on there, you can email the chairman and get involved that way. The involvement at your precinct level is huge for local elections. If you want to do more than that, get involved at the county level. I mean, you can get as, as involved as you want to be in this. And people always wonder, when you see the national convention on TV, who's that crowd from South Carolina standing there, making our vote for who we want our presidential nominee to be? That's where it starts, at your local precinct level. That's the group that moved all the way up, went to the precinct level, the county, the state, to the national convention. So it's, it's very important to get involved. Like I said, you can be as involved as you want to be. You can email me, you can email the Smartburg County GOP and go from there.
That's awesome. Jared, thank you so much for taking the time to be on our podcast. And the whole thing is about learning about you, learn about what you do. And if you have any further questions, you can reach out to Jared. And like he said, you can reach out to him by email. That's the best way to get ahold of him. He's a busy man and he will return your email. And he's active, guys. And one thing I can say is, I've watched him, I've known Jared, I've known his family for years. What you see is what you get. You're not getting that politician, if you will, that he says one thing in front of a camera and then he does something else behind the scenes. You know, this, this is a very upstanding family, involved in different areas. I'm looking forward to interviewing his mother. She is a, a principal at a, a local Christian school. So that'll be coming in the summer. So you can keep an eye out for that. But Jared, the other day, I was just coming through Calpens, it was on a Saturday, and he was out there, you know, people were out there, the community, they were out there with trash bags. And I'm assuming y'all were just doing cleanup and stuff like that. But he was out there in a t-shirt and, and blue jeans and just good old fashioned work. I mean, how many politicians do you know that's going to do that? And so the real deal guy is here. Thanks again, Jared, for, for being on the show. It was good to have you and talk about some of these things.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jonathan. Good to be on Behind the Face. I'm sorry, I rambled the whole time. There's a lot to talk about when you get into politics, of course. So it's good to talk to you.
Absolutely.
It's good to talk to you about this and raise awareness.
Yeah, it's definitely good to have you on here. I, I learned some things myself. And like you said, I'm guilty of not being involved. So guys, the, the moral of the whole thing is, if you're not involved, you don't have a right to complain. And so if we're going to get our country back and, and you want to have a voice, there's only one way to do it. Get involved, jump in, do it. And if you're in the Calpens area, jump onboard, help Jared. I'd love to see him become the mayor there, even though I don't even go to town there. And that's just because I know his character, I know his integrity. So again, thanks for being on the show. Thank you, guys, for being on the Behind the Face podcast. And you have a great day. We'll see you on the next show.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Thanks for listening to the Behind the Face Podcast. I hope you've enjoyed discovering people of the upstate. If you've enjoyed this session, join us next week for another great guest. Be sure to share this episode with all your friends. And if you know an influential person in the upstate that would love to be on our show, send us an email to info@suisc.com. Again, that is info@suisc.com. This episode has been brought to you by Solutions Unlimited. We are a full service IT provider in the upstate for over 25 years. You can find out more about us at solutionsunlimitedsc.com. Again, that is solutionsunlimitedsc.com. Here you will find better IT, better business, and a better life. Well, that's all for this episode, folks. See you next time.